Regarding the recycling, and I was watching, I think it was either 60 Minutes or CBS Sunday Morning, and this is a national issue, and there was a city of Los Angeles about cardboard and bailing and sending it to China and the increase and the issues that are plaguing the recycling. So it's not just the Dallas, Oregon, state of Oregon, it's nationwide, it's everybody.
That's it?
Okay.
Yes, it has been a long time since we had our last meeting. In the meantime, I attended a transportation, it's a new board, the Transportation Board under Mcked on the 21st of December, and I was elected chair, so I'll be leading that effort. The idea is to look for grants, to try to improve link, to look at how we can dovetail and implement the work that was done by our system transportation project, or things like fixed routes, et cetera, et cetera. We have representatives on the county, from the county, myself from the city, we also have a representative from Klicketec County, so we'll be looking at sort of Mcked-wide transportation, but a lot of it, of course, will be centered in the Dallas because that's where the majority of the need is. I attended a governmental affairs meeting last week, and just simply spoke on what we had set for our goals this last year, and how we've progressed, and talked about what was still pending, and the process of our setting goals again this year as we go into the budget process. I was on KODL last Friday, in place -- Julia was home in bed, so I got a second shot at it, pretty good. I attended quite a few meetings regarding Home at Last. The old board would have meetings, and then there were some new people looking at the project, you're going to hear about it tonight. I sat in on meetings with the county, and a lot of what I did was just listen and try to help, but hopefully we'll have a resolution to that. And then I had a meeting with one citizen that wanted to tell me how we could solve our homeless problem, so I listened attentively, and he sent me a couple of articles about what is happening in Seattle, very interesting how they're approaching. I shared that with the chief, and then also got a letter from a student at the community college, again advising me as to what she thought we should do about homelessness. So I'm really glad that we've got some people who are interested and willing to share their ideas, so that's what I've been doing. Consent Agenda. Items of routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the important items at issue. Any council may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action item section. On the consent agenda is approval of the December 11, 2017 regular city council meeting minutes, an authorization to declare surplus of various police department equipment and legal department equipment for donation, and approval of Resolution Number 18 dash zero zero two, concurring with the mayor's appointments to various committees.
I'd like to pull Item C.
Okay. So Item A and B, we will have still subject to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on that? I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All right, been moved and second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hold on, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
That makes that one.
Right. So that would be 11 F, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item, approval of Columbia Gorge Regional Airport fixed base operator lease agreement.
Matthew Cleveland's going to present an initial summary of the lease, and then I'll comment on some proposed amendments. So, Honorable Mayor and members of council, before you do my agenda staff report, on the airport fixed base operator lease agreement. In that staff report, I tried to outline the process that brought us to this moment, the RFP that we put out, the selection of Tac Arrow as our FBO, and the direction that staff got to negotiating an agreement with them. Down below, I tried to outline the key points or changes from the previous agreement we had with the previous FBO, with the current FBO, and then the budget implications. I tried to capture that, in particular, the change in rent and the flowage fee matrix that we proposed. With that, if you happen to answer any questions that you have, but I believe that the city attorney has a little bit more information.
Part of the meeting, we circulated a couple of pages of proposed amendments, and I'll go over those. I suppose we have a third case we'd like the council to approve, requesting in language two. The first one was on page two, under Section four of the term. We corrected a reference to the use of premises section, changed the number from nine -- excuse me, from 10 to nine, and in that same line, we deleted the words "or" and "or," which were surplus words that we should have gone and deleted the first time. The second proposed revision is on page four, in paragraph nine, the use of premises. We added language referring to the requirement to maintain a full-time certified inspection authorized mechanic providing services in the maintenance hangar, and we did this because that was actually part of the scope of work that was in the RFP. From oversight, we didn't miss that, we missed all the other items that are part of the scope of work. Perhaps we didn't include that, so seemed appropriate to include that because it was part of the original scope of work and request for proposal. The last revision is on page seven, Section 18, taxes. This came in part due to the mayor's question about having language indicated that the tenant will pay all applicable state taxes, so we've added language to have them pay all applicable state and Washington taxes, including but not limited to aircraft fuel taxes, business and occupation taxes, and real retail sales taxes. So we're asking you to include those revisions, as well as the tax of the inclusion that we presented to you.
All right. Any questions? Or a motion?
I move to accept the lease between the city of the Dallas, Klicketec County, and Klicketec Corporation, Arrow Inc., DBA Tac Arrow, and authorize mayor and city staff to sign said lease contingent on approval from Klicketec County. I can't do that.
Would that be with the amendment as amended?
As amended.
I'll second.
All right, been moved and second to set the lease between the city of the Dallas, Klicketec County, and Klicketec Corporation, Arrow Inc., DBA Tac Arrow, as stated with the amendments. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of Columbia Gorge Regional Airport manager contract. Are you?
Before Honorable Mayor, you have the agenda staff report in front of you.
Yes.
I can just say, "Dito," from the previous one. No, I'm just kidding. The agenda staff report here also outlines the RFP process that we went through, and the selection of Chuck Colbert as the airport manager, and the company that he would form after that selection was made. That company is Airport Management Agreement, sorry, Aviation Management Services. I read the wrong line. Down below, I've also, again, tried to outline the key points and changes made that differ from the previous agreement that we have, as well as some input that we got from the airport board. And then again, on the under-budget implications, I outlined that with the changes in the monthly fee paid to the airport manager, we'll see an increase in the amount we pay per year, but it's within the amount that we currently have budgeted for the 17, 18 year.
Need to go further?
Try. No, we did not have any proposed revisions to this agreement as you must present.
So do I have a motion regarding this approval of Columbia Gorge Regional Airport manager contract?
I move to accept the airport management agreement between the city of the Dallas, Klicketec County, and Aviation Management Services LLC, and authorize the mayor and city staff to sign said agreement contingent upon approval from Klicketec County.
Second. All right, been moved and second to accept the airport management agreement between the city of the Dallas, Klicketec County, and Aviation Management Services LLC, and authorize the mayor and city staff to sign said agreement contingent upon approval from Klicketec County. Is there any further discussion? Hold on, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of Resolution Number 18 dash zero zero one, approving an enterprise zone extended abatement agreement with Bearing Point Holdings. We have that in our packet. Are you presenting that?
Sam.
He is taking over.
Well, before you, you have yet another agenda staff report from myself. This is for an enterprise zone tax abatement agreement for our enterprise zone, and with Bearing Point Holding LLC, which is proposing to build a hotel. This is very similar to the Powder Pier Agreement that we did a few months ago. It's an extended abatement, so it's a five-year abatement. It follows that same structure, the initial three years, and then the extended and negotiated component with the fourth and fifth year. It's the same additional requirements levied on this company as Powder Pier, with using the matrix and the resolution that we passed for these extended enterprise zone abatements as guidance. I've tried to detail their timeline and some of the new changes to the enterprise zone that took place at the tail end of 2017. Some of the most notable there are has decreased the average compensation that's required from 150% to 130%, and requires that they need an average wage, which is different than compensation, of 100% of the county average. Those are the two major changes that were made. A resolution is required to enter into this agreement for the additional fourth and fifth years, pending approval from Wausau County. Would you happen to answer any questions?
Any questions?
I was just curious, just from working with them, since the average salary is $34,600, how many of those 40 jobs are going to be around that? Because obviously you've got some higher paid management, and then...
Yeah, so when we are looking at employment numbers for the enterprise zone, we are looking at full-time positions, not full-time equivalents. And I did review that criteria with them. There's a pre-authorization conference that we built room to confirm that that 40 number was accurate with the full-time position on FTE, as well as the fact that they'll be able to make that wage requirement both in the first year and in the fourth and fifth year when the 130% trigger in. They affirm that they can make those requirements, and that's something that we check year to year when we submit their reports. Does that answer your question?
Not quite, but it was good information. So, management tends to make a lot more, so I'm just wondering, when you add that together and divide, you can get the average, but I'm wondering, how many of the 40 are going to be saying making $25,000 while somebody else is making, yes? Do you know that?
I don't know that.
What happens if the LLC falls short of their goals?
Well, depending on which criteria they fall short on, they can forfeit the fourth and fifth year of their abatement. They can also forfeit the entire five years. But forfeiture of the fourth and fifth year does not forfeit the three, unless they fail on those requirements as well.
Anything else? I have a motion regarding this Resolution 18 dash zero zero one. We'll go ahead and move to adopt Resolution Number 18 dash zero zero one, approving an extended enterprise zone tax abatement agreement between the sponsors of the Dallas-Wausau County Enterprise Zone and Bearing Point Holdings LLC, contingent on approval from Wausau County.
I'll second.
All right, I'm moving second to approve Resolution Number 18 dash zero zero one, approving enterprise zone extended abatement agreement with Bearing Point Holdings, subject to approval by Wausau County. Anytime we do an enterprise zone agreement, it takes the agreement of both the city and the county, that's why I put it in there. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. Next item, approval of Special Orders Number 18 dash 578, Century Link franchise agreement.
Oh, we have the back of Mayor Lawrence. Back in May of 1996, the council adopted Special Ordinance Number 96444, giving a non-exclusive franchise for telephone service to Sprint Telephone, which was a successor to United Telephone Company. That ordinance actually provided that the term of the franchise was for an indefinite period. I believe I may have indicated to the council some point, we thought this ordinance had actually expired, but in looking at the original ordinance, it essentially was an indefinite term, so there was still in effect, has been till this new ordinance. In looking at the terms of the original 1996 ordinance and the current other provisions that we give to other franchisees, it appears that the 1996 ordinance has several outdated provisions. We worked with representatives from Century Link that has now taken over the operations for United Telephone and Sprint to prepare a new franchise, which is set forth in Ordinance Number 18 578. Under the new ordinance, it'll be a 10-year term, which is pretty common with our other franchises that we have with other telecommunications companies. The ordinance proposes they will pay a franchise fee of 7% of their local exchange access service gross revenue, which is the maximum amount people collect by law. We cannot raise it any higher. One change we did make under the new ordinance is that they will pay their franchise fee annually within 30 days. I believe the current ordinance had them paying it monthly, I think, or quarterly, but they wanted to pay annually, is what they do with other cities, and our finance director was okay with that proposal. One section that took a while to resolve was the issue about street cuts. Century Link was concerned about the policy we have about moratorium on new streets that don't allow excavations. We added some language that allows for emergency repairs to restore service. We felt that would protect them, and they were satisfied with that language. Most of the other provisions are pretty much standard compared to our current ordinance in terms of identification, relocation facilities, and renewal and revocation of the franchise. In terms of the budget implications, our current budget shows that we anticipate revenue just a little over $36,000, actually closer to $37,000. So we expect that that number will probably be about the same, hopefully not drop a lot. That is what we anticipate. This ordinance has been posted pursuant to city charge, so it can be adopted by title only, and we recommend that you do that tonight.
And this doesn't call for a public hearing, does it?
No, it says that.
I didn't have that language done, anyway. I wanted to make sure. Anybody have any questions? Right?
No.
A motion?
Yeah. You would ask the city clerk, or ask the council, they can ask that.
I wanted to find out if there were questions first. Any questions regarding what you presented?
Yeah.
Does anyone wish to have the ordinance ready and full?
No.
Would you please read the ordinance by title only?
Special Ordinance Number 18 dash 578, an ordinance granting a franchise to United Telephone of the Northwest DBA Century Link on behalf of itself and its operating affiliates, Century Link, to operate and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of the Dallas, Oregon, the city.
Right.
I move to adopt Special Ordinance Number 18 dash 578 by title only.
I'll second.
Been moved second to approve Special Ordinance Number 18 dash 578, Century Link franchise agreement by title only. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. Next item on the agenda is 11 E, and it's a proposal from Central Oregon Animal Friends slash Home at Last.
Thank you. I think I sent you out an email before I got sick to let you know that this was coming, and that people have been, many people, working on this for about a month now.
Since November.
Together. So the Home at Last board had a lot of meetings, they met with myself, they met with the mayor, they met with Wausau County commissioners individually, I believe, they met with Tyler Stone, then they started coming, developing this plan as one that would be lasting, where otherwise it was just, how can we get more money, fundraise, fundraise, and it wasn't a solution to the ongoing problems that they were having. So I was very pleased and proud of the hard work that everyone put in to come up with a solution that will be lasting and meaningful for our community. So that's what you have before you tonight. I am told that the merger between the two nonprofits was signed on Friday. I haven't seen those signed documents, but that's what I was told by one board member. So they are all in agreement, ready to proceed. The new body, which is Central Oregon Animal Friends, is the name of the nonprofit, is requesting that Wausau County and city of the Dallas each provide $25,000 as a one-time financial contribution, because as you know, Hal is in financial difficulty, and so they don't have any capital to really start out with. So a one-time contribution, the county has agreed to de-them the property, the building, and they will continue to do all the licensing, and from my perspective, the city would continue to do the animal control program that we've already had in place for a number of years. So it is a really big win for the city and the county, and mostly the shelter and the community at large. So I am recommending that we go ahead and authorize a $25,000 expenditure contingent on Wausau County needing that contribution. And under the budget implications, I spoke with the finance director about this, and while our contingency is below the 10% goal that we set every year, our beginning fund balance has far exceeded its goal, and we feel very confident that this is not going to be a financial burden to the city.
Any questions?
Yes.
Can I get some nods on that?
I'm impressed you're using it.
Well, just going through the motion. I have some concern about -- it's working as well as usual.
Really well.
Right in. I have some concern, you know, it says it's a one-time gift, grant, whatever you want to call it, but I've read through the proposal, it's a really nice proposal. I'll look on my microphone. It has nothing in there that would provide any kind of protection to the city of the Dallas. What I'm saying is, it's a one-time grant gift, whatever you want to call it. But in a year or two, if the management decides that it's not working for them, and they back up and move back to Madras, then that one-time gift will probably end up being another one-time gift. I just don't question if we -- I think we hand out a lot of money without attaching strings to it, so that the city's protected. I think we're supposed to be stewards of the public dollars, and I'd just like to see if there's some way we can't, you know, within a year or two years, or something, there is not some way the city be reimbursed, at least partially, for that gift. I mean, I have a little problem just throwing the money out there and saying, "Have a blast," and, you know, and...
I think one of the reasons that I felt so confident, secure, was their track record. I mean, they're operating two different entities in Central Oregon now, and they've been very successful, they have a good operating plan, so I felt confident about that. I'm not sure what strings you would attach. As a body, you can't commit funds beyond a year anyway, so I'm not sure what...
There's no protection for our investment, is what I'm trying to say. Like I said, I read through the proposal, it's a beautiful proposal, and it appears they're more than qualified to do it, but does that...
Do you have some ideas on how you would...
I'm not aware. I was hoping maybe Gene could come up with something, or I might at least have the comfort. Come on. You know, I want to give people the impression that I'm concerned about $25,000 going out the door and really having tangible in a year or two.
The only thing I can say is that, you know, one of the things that Tyler kept saying is, this was like the fourth iteration on Home at Last. Home at Last has gone through ups and downs. And one of the things that I heard at the meetings was, when these individuals went to Madras, they were like $40,000 in the hole. Right now, they're finishing the construction of a half a million dollar building, which they've done through grants and fundraising. Also, I sat in on the board of directors' meetings between Home at Last and Central Oregon, and in that meeting, Home at Last got to ask every possible question that they could ask about how they would do things, and et cetera, et cetera, what their history was. And at the end of it, what became clear to me is that they were satisfied, and the Central Oregon people said, "We have three board members, who are actually from the Dallas. One is Ray Swift, the other one is Shannon Morgan, and Paul V. Masterson." They are actually the board members of this organization in Central Oregon, and they were there, and they continued to say, you know, "These people are really good. They know what they're doing," et cetera, et cetera. And so, one of the parts of that is that Home at Last will get two representatives on that 501(c)(3). In other words, Home at Last will go away, and this organization will continue. And I felt the strengths that I heard were synergy between three different, you know, rescue centers, in terms of even maybe having animals go back and forth, if they couldn't be found a home in the Dallas, they might try a Madras, et cetera. And then the other thing is economy of scale, because of course, the accounting is going to be done by one organization, and the books will all be under one cover. So, I mean, after all the conversations, and nobody knew what to do, all the reserves were spent down by board members who are no longer there at Home at Last, and so there is no reserve. And so, the idea that I heard discussed and expressed, and the request was, this would act as a reserve to make sure that they did succeed.
I certainly don't have any, like I said, this proposal's impressive, to say the least. And I certainly don't have anything against saving dogs or anything else. I just, I don't know. I just kind of, after getting, I'll admit that after we got bit by the Bourbon Front Trail that went nowhere, I'm really gun-shy of almost anything that involves not having some way of avoiding getting hung out in the dry. I mean, I'm sure we're going, I'm sure this is going to pass, I'll vote for it.
I just can't see what you would require from them. I mean, this is the best shot that since November I've, that has come down the pipe, and we were really on the verge of having Home at Last closed with no alternative. And all of a sudden, Central Oregon walked in the door and said, "You know what? The principals are a husband and wife that used to be out here, so they know this business inside and out," and...
I don't question any of that, Steve. I, you know, I was hoping that Gene would either say, you know, "Maybe we could do this," or "There's nothing we can do," or, you know, I think these people are overqualified to do the job. I don't, just...
I guess their proposal does provide basically for an initial term of three years with the review of the contract terms. It's like, at 12 months, so it appears that they intend to have at least an initial review after the initial period, so certainly there were some concerns there that could be raised at that point. There's also some line that said I was going to maybe even talk with Julia, the mayor, about, they talk about the property would be deeded to them from Wausau County, but then they refer to a 120-day release clause, and I'm not sure, were they talking about a possible reversion if they were to not operate? I don't know if that's...
I don't know if that's their agreement with Wausau County.
Okay, so I, again, that could be the only concern we could put in about a reversion clause if they were to cease operation, the property would go back, of course, they're going to leave the county, not us, so I don't know, but I don't see...
That's the way it was before with Home at Last. They gave the building to Home at Last, and if Home at Last terminated, it would, right now, go back to the counter. So I think what that addresses, and my understanding is that if, for whatever reason, this thing is not, I don't know, is not a goal, then the building doesn't get deeded to that organization. I don't know. I mean, I know... I mean, I, I know that the way that the, the money thing came up was, they wanted originally, you'll, you'll have this, they wanted like nine years, I'm, I'm talking about Home at Last. And then, there was a proposal for support over multiple years. And Tyler Stone, the administrator for Wosco County, said, look, I'll do a one-time, and that's it, read my lips, and, and then the city was asked to, to match that. So, that's how that came about.
Okay. I'm ready to vote. I, I just, I had concerns. Apparently, nothing can be done, or...
We had asked to include a provision of that, twenty-five thousand dollars would be reimbursed at some point, but again, I think that was not part of the discussion with...
No, yeah.
I don't know where that would lead in negotiations.
This is intended for saved money for a, a service that's vital to the city. So, I think it's a worthy expenditure of taxpayers' money.
I never said it wasn't worthy. I, I, you're missing my point.
No.
I, I give up, I'm ready to vote. Let's just...
I just wanted to say that I appreciate Russ's fiscal responsibility in bringing that up, and that's kind of his role on the board. And we discussed it, and it's important to have a discussion and not make it personal, but thanks, Russ.
It's not personal. I responded, and, and I do appreciate Russ as well, so... But I think this is a, this is an expenditure that's justified.
It's a necessity.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion then, in that regard.
Okay, I'll move to approve a one-time contribution to the Central Oregon Animal Friends in the amount of twenty-five thousand to be paid from the contingency fund.
I'll second that.
We move and second to approve a one-time contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars from the contingency fund in support of the entity, Central Oregon Animal Friends, which is taking over Home at Last. Any further discussion?
Will that, Central Oregon Animal Friends, will that continue to be the name?
Yes. Home at Last goes away.
Okay. So, this will be the new, okay, thank you.
And it's a five oh one T three.
All right. All right. Any other discussion? Hold the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved. Next item on the agenda is eleven F, which is the resolution concurring with the mayor's appointments of various committees and commissions, which was moved at the request of Councilwoman Long Curtis, so... What's yours?
Well, that was kind of confrontational.
No.
My, my, the reason I had it removed is I didn't know Joe Barcott, and I was wondering about some more information.
He's right here. Would you stand up and give him a little of the history that I know and Julie knows?
I, I moved to the Dallas a year and a half ago, and I, I want to get more involved in local government, local affairs. As I've indicated on my application, I've been on the planning commission in a town in Colorado, and I've been involved in other local affairs.
You're, you're a retired attorney?
Yes.
And you've been on other budget committees?
No.
All right. What other things did you do regarding governmental, there was a whole list, as I recall?
Well, I, I've always been active in, in, in local, in various localities. I've been in Rotary. As far as government goes, I was on a planning commission, it's probably the same as, as the Dallas Planning Commission, a planning commission in Fruta, Colorado. I was on the commission for several years, and that's probably extended my government volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of, of, and then I, and as I told him tonight, that I'm be willing to sit down and meet with Mr. Barcott and have further discussion on anything that he wishes to explore. Any other questions of him? All right. So, we have a motion regarding the...
I actually also have a concern about the urban renewal appointment, the reappointment of John Frederick. I, I serve on that committee, and Mr. Frederick has been pretty confrontational, and he also stated over the last year that he doesn't understand the process, and I feel like that he isn't a very good fit for that board. And I would like to see a more positive, proactive person in that particular position, so that we can have nine people looking at how we're going to redo the downtown. I just, I feel like he's made a lot of statements that have been inflammatory, and it opens the city up to liability. And at this point, he's also doing a lot of work with his business that causes conflicts of interest, so it would be better to have someone that didn't have some...
I don't know, but it's all things business. You're on.
I totally disagree with you. I, I believe that he has a, a positive input. It may not be what everybody else's is, but he's seeing things in a different perspective than what some of us are. And I, I believe that he's a good fit for the urban pale.
Right. My appointment with him was after reading the minutes and seeing the fact that he, he asked really good questions. And I have talked to him about it, and he is positive. But tell you what, he just doesn't accept something at face value. If he thinks that he needs more information, he asks a tough question, and, and actually, that was a major consideration in my reappointing him, because we need somebody like that on the board. And quite frankly, Councilwoman, you're the one who butted heads with him. I, I haven't seen anybody else do that. And, you know, I think it's, it's okay to have, you know, people who believe in one approach and other people who believe in other approaches, because it represents the community, and that's why I want him on there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm just, I, I don't know if you've gone back and listened to the tapes or not, and it's true that we have a difference of opinion, but there were times, especially when we butted heads the last time, is the vote was over, and he was still verbally attacking businesspeople in our community, and it was not the appropriate time for that, and the chair did not stop it. So, yes, I did say something about it.
That's your characterization. I don't see him doing that. I see him asking really tough questions and wanting to know, when you look at the history, why things are being done a certain way, et cetera, et cetera. And I know you disagree with him, but I don't see him as confrontational. I see him as being tough-minded with the urban renewal dollars. And I see him positive. I think your comment to him was, why do you hate these people? And his comment back, it's on the tapes, was that, I don't hate anybody. This is just business. I'm trying to get to the bottom of the facts.
Except that it wasn't business, he was misstating that they had not paid their bills, which was very untrue. And I found it hypocritical for someone in his financial position to be accusing them of something. And I was trying not to put that on the public record, and so I'm just saying, I don't think that's a very respectful way to treat people that are coming to urban renewal and wanting to work with the city. I don't mind if people have a difference of opinion with me. I've worked with a lot of different people. I just, I just feel that he's not a good fit. I mean, have an opportunity to appoint someone where we can really have some vision. This has been really hard for him. He doesn't understand. He said that himself. You can go back and listen to the tapes. And I wasn't meaning this to be an attack on him. I was only saying that maybe we had a different choice that we can make.
And I don't think you, I, I really don't think it's a good reason to object to somebody because they disagree with you. That seems to me more of what's happening.
I'm not saying because he's disagreeing.
Anybody else have any concerns?
I'm on that committee, and I'm not seeing the way that you are seeing it. I'm not seeing, I'm not, I wasn't hearing the comments that Mr. Fredericks was making as deflamatory, or he was just inquiring. He's inquisitive, and he's making a statement, making statements of the difference between what he is seeing and what others are seeing. That's my take on it.
Well, I, I really feel strongly that he's a good member of the committee, and would ask that he be approved.
I do too.
So, I need something regarding the resolutions. Okay. Is this a consent?
This was the resolution number eighteen dash zero zero two, removed from the consent agenda, so I will take a separate motion.
Aaron. All right. I'm trying to find, I, you know, I accept that reason, and... All right. Should say at the bottom, yeah, looking, oh, I see it. John Fredericks to be selected to the urban...
Well, there, there are a number of, of appointments on there.
Yeah, I see the entire resolution.
You want to reject the resolution, and then you can make the title of the resolution?
Resolution concurring with the mayor's appointments?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution concurring with the mayor's appointments on various committees and commissions. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
I've been moving second to approve resolution concurring with the mayor's appointments on various committees. Any further discussion? Hold the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Want to vote, that passes. There's nothing else on the agenda, so for tonight, we're adjourned.